Well, we seem to have a lot of chairs.
I don't know if it keeps moving though.
I don't know. So Mike, are you going to read the one letter? Oh, here. I have a comment. I have a copy. Two minutes. I have, I have two more that are here to speak. Call the October 26, 2020 City Council Committee to hold the order the clerk will call to roll.
Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank is absent. Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Under public comment this evening, we have two in person and one letter to read. We have Jake and Carla Weiss present to, they each like to speak, and it's up to you which one of you would like to go first. If you just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jake Weiss. My residence is 130 East 9th Street, Belvidere. Good evening. My name is Jake Weiss. I recently moved to Belvidere after purchasing my first home at 130 East 9th Street on August 7th. I had spent about a year looking at duplexes before finding the right one. I chose this property because of how well the house and yard were maintained. The yard was very well taken care of and had beautiful trees, including some large spruce trees on the west side of my property. I was shocked when I arrived home at my house the afternoon of Friday, the 18th of September, to find all my spruce trees had been trimmed about 15 feet up. After contacting the city, I was informed my spruce trees were trimmed because they were next to an unimproved alley that runs along the west side of my property. These trees are approximately 40 years old and had never been trimmed back before now. This unimproved alley is essentially a manicured lawn with no culvert or gravel, which myself and the adjacent property owner maintain. I believe Alderman Freeman abused her powers, Alderman, to get the Public Works Department to trim my trees so she could pull her camper through the unimproved alley. My trees were trimmed not vehicle high, but high enough to pull the camper through, which she recklessly did on September, Saturday, September 19th. After doing some research on this matter, it seems this has been an ongoing issue that the city has yet to resolve. I don't believe people should be driving through these unimproved alleyways that are essentially landscaped lawns. It is my hope that the city will resolve this issue in a timely manner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Weiss, Carla?
My name is Carla Weiss. My address is 804 North Taylor Street, Moringo, Illinois. But I would like to say I'm also a property owner of several properties here in Belvidere, Illinois, and I'm here in regards to the unimproved alleys as well. I do have pictures of the before and after of the tree trimming that I'd like to share with you as soon as I'm done speaking. But I just wanted to take a minute to talk to you about my, I'm here as a mother and as a property owner. Jake has shared his disappointment with the city coming in and destroying his landscape within 45 days of him purchasing his property. I wanted to talk to you today because I think it's a very sad situation that it came before this council two years ago on April 16, 2018, and nothing was done. So within that amount of time, he, you know, purchased the property. As he said, it was very well maintained. It had beautiful park-like setting in the background till the city came in and destroyed it. I know that it's on the agenda tonight to discuss your unimproved alleyways. I am a property owner of another unimproved alleyway that, that has grass as well. And so we're, my husband and I are, you know, very interested in how you guys are going to approach this. I know that, that Marcia, I feel, I think she, it was grossly abused, her power on that. But we hold no ill feeling against Marcia or her family. I think that the city is aware of it. I think you're aware that something has to be done with this. And I actually feel that, I know my husband has spoke to most of you, and it's legal to drive through people's grass according to your ordinances. And you have several unimproved alleyways with grass on it. My husband, if we don't take care of it, if you, if you don't, if you continue to ignore it like you did two years ago, he will have a alley wally and he will drive through other people's grass to get them to come to the city council if he needs to bring it to the attention. So I just wanted to say that you have these young people. I know there's a young gentleman professional, just like my son, that's purchasing the property on the adjacent side of the unimproved alley, which is grass. And that's what you guys want, is these young, professional, tax-paying people to come into your communities. And I think every community would want something like that. I did also look up the Illinois Municipal Code, and I understand that you do have authority to trim the trees, but it also states that you cannot do it for personal reasons. And this was done for a personal reason. And I do have pictures that I, I'll walk around because of COVID, so you don't have to touch it, the before and the after. But it's 15 feet in the air. So these, these 40-year-old trees were actually probably a 20-foot span. And now it's like, it looks like it's stick with some things up at the top. It's just, it's very sad. It's actually very sad. So I want to thank you. I hope you can solve this problem. Because I do actually own another prop, I own a, my son owns the one property that the trees got trimmed, but I do own another property on the alley that is grass. And so that's why my husband and I also have a stake in it. And I just want to thank you for your time and hope you can come to some conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. We also have a letter that was sent by Mr. Kruckenberg. That will be read into the record by our city attorney. Attorney Drella, please proceed.
This is a form submission, public comment submitted by Lanny Kruckenberg via email. That was received in clerk's office this afternoon, October 26th. These are Mr. Kruckenberg's statements. I'll read as follows. It has come to my attention that the alley behind my property is located at 1528 and 1532 South State Street is up for discussion on tonight's agenda. The alley has been a source of contention in my neighborhood for nearly 20 years. Meanwhile, Mayor Chamberlain was an alderman and Fred Brereton was mayor. I came to council asking that tree branches owned by Mr. Charles Byers, who owned the property but did not reside there, were blocking the public right-of-way exit at the south end of the alley be trimmed and removed by our Public Works Department so as to rightfully open up the alley for public access at both ends. The council subsequently made a motion and the majority voted to improve the unimproved portion of the alley all the way through with blacktop at that time. Then Mayor Brereton vetoed the vote. I came back to council after Mr. Chamberlain was elected mayor, again asking that the tree branches owned by Mr. Byers be cut as they're in violation of not one, but two city ordinances blocking a public right-of-way on city-owned property. Again, the council motioned to go ahead and improve the alley with blacktop all the way through. The motion passed, but the vote was vetoed once again, this time by Mayor Chamberlain. Mr. Byers has recently sold his property and Public Works has finally fulfilled their duties in cutting the branches that were obstructing public right-of-way in violation of city ordinance for nearly 20 years. The owner of the property, who also doesn't reside there, is up in arms that the alley is now obstruction-free and open for use. To that, I say if you didn't want alley running parallel to your property, you shouldn't have bought a property with an alley running parallel to it. It is the equivalent of saying, I brought the property next to a farm, but I don't want the noise and smell of the farm. Therefore, I'd like the noise and smells of the farm or the farm itself removed. It's a ludicrous request. There is no law that prohibits driving on unimproved grass alley in the state of Illinois. I've been doing it for 24 years. It's the only way to access the rear of my properties and the existing structures they're in. I've not asked for the state to improve the alley with gravel, pavement, or anything else, nor am I tonight. Only that it be open for access at both ends. I'm happy the city has finally, after all these years, done the right thing and made the alley accessible to the people on my block at both ends. Mr. Byers and Mr. Kriegen, who fought so hard all those years to keep the tree branches in place by obstructing a public right-of-way, has essentially fought, I'm sorry, has essentially gotten away with stealing city property from the taxpayers and incorporating it into a part of their yard. It was high time the taxpayers took back their land and right-of-way access and was long overdue. I have existing structures on the alley as defined by the 2015 IRC code that prohibiting driving on grass would obstruct my access too. By the city trying to own words, closing alleys that are not proved to be hit, can only be done, and I quote, "so long as it does not prohibit access to an existing structure," end quote. Therefore, that option would leave this council no other option but to improve the alley at a cost to the taxpayers of the city. Neither I nor Alderman Freeman, who also resides on the alley, condone any taxpayer money being spent, I'm sorry, condone any taxpayer money be spent to improve an alley that is fine the way it is. If this council wants to appease Mr. Weiss and Kriegen with graveling all a portion of the alley at this time, then that's okay with me too. I'm also just fine with driving on it as is and leaving a status quo. Thank you. Lanny Kruckenberg.
And so ends our public comment this evening. Which then takes us on to a public forum, which we have none this evening. Following that, reports of officers, boards, and special committees under number one, finance and personnel, unfinished business, there is none on the agenda this evening. Under finance and personnel, new business, under A, we have budget, finance, update. It's an FYI from our finance director, Becky Tobin. Ms. Tobin, please proceed.
Yes, in your packet for tonight, there are a couple of the spreadsheets that I have been including in your packet for the last few months. You have the fiscal year 2021 revenue comparables, where you can see the comparables for October revenues that came in. Sales tax is holding steady, as well as home rule sales tax. You'll see on the second page that I gave you with the municipal sales tax comparables. Last month, we were at 9% decline for sales tax, and now we're at 8.42. So it is going in the right direction. Home rule sales tax, last month, we were at a 13% decline, and it's now at 11.35. So those numbers are improving, still not perfect, but they are better than they have been, especially through earlier months of this fiscal year. Local use tax again is extremely high compared to last year at this time. Again, this is because of all the online purchasing that people are making. So that is, that is where that tax comes from. Your income tax is holding for two reasons. One, obviously, unemployment pays into income tax. So everybody who's on unemployment, those taxes are still coming in and going out to the municipalities. And also, we are, since July, we have been receiving our full 100% that we're supposed to be receiving of our local government distribution fund. It had been at 95% for the last few years, and they reinstated our other 5%. So that's about another 130,000 for us that normally we had not been receiving the last few years. So, so far, income tax is holding steady. MFT and transportation tax as well, you know, off a little bit, but not, not terrible. Video gaming is going strong again, as it was last month. So all in all, things are looking okay. I also included the gas utility tax, so you could see that additional municipal gas use tax revenue that started coming in in June. And that October number was extremely high, at a little over 72,000. Those numbers will continue to go up as our cold weather months set in. So I'm anticipating revenues of at least another 300 to 350,000 throughout the rest of this fiscal year. So that is really helping us this year in light of the pandemic and some of the other revenues that are coming in under budget. The other thing, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that we've been working on. You may have noticed in the BDR last week, we had our annual treasures report. That's a document that we're required by state statute to publish once a year. Has all of our revenues, all of our expenditures for last fiscal year. It highlights every single vendor that we paid money out to, over $2,500. So all that is public records. So if you look in the BDR, I think it's only published once a week now. But I think it was last Thursday, it takes up a full page. So that's, we have, we're required to do that every year by the end of October. So you'll notice that. Another piece of good news, the Cures Grant. This is the money that passed through the federal government to the state specifically for municipalities in light of COVID. We've already received, our allotment of that was a million 55,000. Last week, we received our first 227,000 of that. And last Friday, I applied for the other 828,000. And so we should be receiving all of that within the next couple of weeks. So that's a huge, a huge help to us. So that's a million 55,000 that we were not expecting to receive at all this year. Next thing, starting to work on the budget. So by the end of this week, your department heads will have a copy of a budget document for them to start working on. They then in turn get those back to me by the beginning of December. And then that's when we start our internal process, and we sit down and start going through numbers and, and start to work on things before it gets presented to you in January. And the only other thing is credit card machines. We, starting tomorrow, the city clerk's office and community development are going through training, and we have a new credit card machine. So not only will Public Works take cards, but so will your city clerk and your community development. That is all I have.
Okay. Under item C. Excuse me? Alderman Snow, you have a question? Does anybody have a question for Ms. Tobin concerning budget update or capital expenditures?
I, I have a question.
Please proceed.
So Becky, our revenues have gone back up a little bit from the spring. But I'm thinking that that's because we merged from the Tier 2 enhanced mitigations, and so we were able to get more revenue. And now, as of today, we've been put back down into the Tier 2 enhanced mitigations. So I'm assuming that until we come back out of that, and our numbers are pretty high right now, so I don't know how long that might take, our revenues are projected to drop back down again, correct?
Well, it depends. A big part of that is, yeah, if, if your businesses are closing. But here again, for us, a lot of our revenues are coming from, I would say, some of your big, your big box stores and some of those that aren't closing and that continue to perform well. You are correct, that, that definitely could affect. You have some of these businesses that are, that have to close their doors or go back to just curbside. There's definitely going to be an effect there. You're right.
Additional questions or comments?
Snow has a question for Becky.
Just a minute, Alderman Snow. Just a moment, please. Alderman Porter had a question first. Alderman Porter, please proceed.
Yeah, Becky, which one did you say includes the online sales tax?
So that is called your local use tax. So that would be, yeah, the third one down on that line that you see.
Okay, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
Yes, when it comes to the, when it comes to the credit card deal, is there a fee for the people to use the credit cards?
There is a fee. So there's, there's no fee to the city. The city did not have to pay for the credit card machines, but that user fee does get passed along to, to the person that uses it, and I believe it's 1%.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments from Ms. Tobin? Okay, hearing none. Up next, under item C, we have our annual Risk Management Association renewal from IML.
I'm sorry, we still have item B.
I'm sorry, I jumped over one. Capital expenditures for 2021. Ms. Tobin, please proceed.
So in your packet, you will see a letter from me addressing that we're halfway through this budget year and how we'd hold, held off on all capital expenditures for the most part up to this point, because we wanted to see how our revenues looked, how our expenditures looked. Obviously, these are unprecedented times. We weren't sure how our budget was, was going to react to this. I've had some discussion with some department heads who have been waiting and have been very due diligent with their budgets and, and not spending what they don't have to. And we decided this might be a good time to revisit some of these capital items, not all of them, and perhaps proceed with, with purchasing. So I think tonight you're going to hear from the police department on a couple of issues and your fire chief at next month's meeting regarding a couple of issues. So it's just in, in my mind, I've, I've been down the path where we wait and wait and wait two or three, four years, and then all of a sudden, you're stuck with, you haven't purchased anything for so long, and the list is so long, and then playing catch-up can get, can become really, really difficult and stressful on a budget. So if we have some funds that we can purchase some items now, so we're not doing that, playing catch-up down the road, I just think it's a really good idea.
Okay. I'll entertain any questions for Ms. Tobin concerning this subject.
Alderman Snow has, so the highlighted items have already been purchased and are completed. Is that correct?
Correct. So the items on there, yes, they've either been purchased, they've been approved by council, or they're, they're a contract that we're already signed into, like the fire engine payment and the mini pumper. Those were things that we had already began or had a contract for that we have to pay for. The other thing, I guess I wanted to highlight quick is that the big, maybe confusing spreadsheet that I handed out to you, I forgot to address a couple. This has about 30 pages behind it that I use internally, that helps me project trends as to where I see us finishing out the fiscal year. You'll notice I still anticipate our revenues being higher than our expenditures by about 215,000. And that includes if we were to purchase all the capital items that were in the budget. So for every item you don't purchase, you can add that amount to that balance. And that is what your projected ending balance would be for the fiscal year. Plus, this does not include that million 55,000 that you're getting from, from the federal Cures Grant. So you're looking at ending this fiscal year. Like I said, it's early to tell. These are trends and, and I do tend to be conservative. But you're going to end the year with at least six to 6.4 months of reserves still.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Tobin concerning this subject? Hearing none. Under item C, the 2021 IML Risk Management Association Annual Renewal. Tobin, you want to talk to this issue, please?
This is our annual renewal for our workman's comp and our general liability insurance through IML. We are really pleased with this number. This is the third year in a row that they have not given us any increase whatsoever. So we're pretty happy with this. And this does get split out in your budget. The general fund pays a portion, and then water and sewer also pay. Water pays 16% of it, and sewer pays 19% of it. So the general fund has not absorbed this whole amount. The general fund pays 450,495.
Okay. Questions or comments concerning the renewal of our liability insurance?
Snow has, Snow has a question.
Please proceed, Alderman Snow.
So on here, it also lists on the left, bottom left hand of the sheet about paying early and then your full payment and then the paying and installment. So which way do we tend to go in that regard?
And I should have answered that, I'm sorry. We, we are fortunate enough to use option one. So we receive the 1% discount, that's $7,000 savings. And that's why it's coming to you now, so that we can make sure we get that payment in before November 20th.
And so do we need a motion for that?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Snow and a second by Porter. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, under, and thank you, Ms. Tobin, for your reports this evening. Next up, under number three, public safety unfinished business, there is none on the agenda for this evening's discussion, which takes us to public safety, new business. And first up is the fire department with an update for us. Captain Heiser, you have the floor. Oh, yeah, Chief Heiser. Captain, Admiral, whatever.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to speak on COVID and how it relates to our fire department. We continue to use recommended precautions prescribed by the CDC and the Illinois Department of Public Health. We started this in early March, and even though we responded to many positive citizens with COVID, we have remained relatively free of the virus. I commend my firefighters, paramedics, weekly for their continued due diligence in keeping this virus out of our firehouses and our homes. Special recognition I'd like to provide to the Boone County dispatchers for their hard work when fielding 911 calls and screening callers, which in turn gives my guys a heads up on potential carriers. We have numerous, numerous things that we do as, when we respond to people with potential COVID virus, mostly in the way of PPE. We're doing really well with that. We have a nice, a good stockpile of the things that we need. And like I said, our guys are doing a tremendous job in answering the needs of our citizens. Do anyone have any questions pertaining to the COVID in Belvidere Fire Department?
Snow has a question.
Please proceed.
So Chief Heiser, do you get the impression that yours is a unique department in not having issues, or is this fairly common amongst the fire departments because everybody is really extremely cautious?
Probably both, Alderman Snow. There's some luck involved in this as well. We finally, in our department, we, we did have somebody, had a spouse who contracted it, and we were really concerned about that. However, our precautions that we do have in place, I believe, kept really concerned about that. However, our precautions that we do have in place, I believe, kept it, kept it out of their, our firehouse. I can't really speak on other fire departments, but I do know it takes a lot of dedication by people who respond every day to, to, like I said, our citizens' needs. And it takes a lot of dedication to, to do the things that we ask. And I know at some point, it does get tiresome to them. But I'd just like to just say that they just continue to do a great job. And I'm very proud of the fact that we're doing really well down there up to this point.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? Yes, Alderman Arivolo?
Worst case scenario, what happened, let's say, A shift or B shift or C shift contacted COVID. We're not going to have enough manpower to cover those shifts. What can we do?
So it depends how many, Alderman Arivolo, it depends how many people would contract it. Typically, we can, we continue to come into the stations until we show symptoms. So just because maybe one of our guys have contracted the, the virus, doesn't mean that everybody's out of the game. All right? If some, a worst case scenario where we did have a numerous, numerous people out, we definitely had to, you know, we're not going to hire a bunch of folks right now. It would be a problem. And that's one of the reasons, like right now, I just, I cannot be more pleased with how we're responding to this. And we've been doing this since March. We do have in place with agencies from around in Boone County that we could definitely rely on them to respond to fires and other calls that need more manpower. And that's in place already. However, this, it'd be very extremely difficult if we're to have a whole shift to go off. Be a lot of pressure on everybody else.
Okay. Additional questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your update. Do you have something else to contribute?
Yes, sir. I got, I should have said something. I got, I want to talk about fire safety as well.
Sure, that'd be great.
And then also our BTAC unit. All right. Fire Safety Month, October. As firefighters, we always look forward to the month of October. It is our time to shine. In typical years, you will find us in all of our District 100 schools delivering our fire safety messages to all our second graders. We do that by using our highly successful No Second Graders Left Behind in Fire Safety program. This year, we're doing our best in Zoom remote learning. It is not the effective way that we want to teach our, our kids, but it is all we have until all our schools are allowed to be open. We continue to do, we'll, we'll make videos and stuff and where the kids can like watch our guys, we'll do tours of the, of the firehouses. We'll talk about fire safety and then we're making this available to our, our District 100 students. Any questions in relation to that? Seeing no questions, I'd like to move on to the BTAC 2, or as like a lot of people would like to refer to it as, mini pumper. I sent some pictures around, went around the room. It looks like it's made all the way around for those in attendance. It's progressing nicely. I have pictures showing where we are in the build. Alexis, the manufacturer, the builder, is estimating in December, mid-December for its completion. We're looking forward to it. We are, like I was mentioning a lot, numerous times in council that we do have an aging fleet. We have a, our most recent purchase was thankfully, 2018 pumper. However, we are showing some other signs of like, we have a 2002 pumper and we have a 1991 which should be put away a long time ago. So this would be a, this would be something that we'd be happy to have joining our fleet and we're looking very much forward to it. And when it is completed, I will have it. Hopefully, it'll be a nice day in December and I'll have it down here to show everybody what it can do and what we're looking, you know, some of the equipment that would be putting on that, that unit. So anyone have any questions relating to that? One final thing, Mayor?
Please proceed.
November, public safety, as Ms. Tobin had mentioned, I will be coming to the council in November for permission to purchase a command vehicle to replace our 2005 Chevy Tahoe, which is a two-wheel drive with 120,000 miles on it. I've witnessed duct tape and other, other means of holding things together. And like I said, I will be coming to you in November to get something for the guys to drive. It's definitely, we need something that would be safer. So. Any questions from council? That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Nice report. Next up, from the police department, chief. Chief Woody will bring us up to date on what's going on with his department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I get set up up here. So like Chief Heiser, I wanted to go ahead and just kind of bring the city council up to speed on a few things that may be of interest that's happening within the Belvidere Police Department. Command staff's still researching different body camera companies. Currently, we're in the testing and evaluation phase. We're testing body worn cameras by Panasonic, which is the same company that all of our in-car cameras are purchased from. We're also testing body, body worn cameras from Montel Technologies as well. Deputy Chief Wallace is getting feedback from patrol on a regular basis as we continue to get price quotes from both companies. We started another citizens' police academy last Wednesday, October 14th. This will continue for 10 weeks, every Wednesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Class size is roughly 15 people in attendance. And a side note is, we are taking obviously additional COVID precautions with masks and social distancing as well to make sure that everybody's able to be safe while in attendance. The police department's still working to get approval for the comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse, also known as the COSAP grant, which would allow a police officer to be assigned to the grant program, work directly to address opioid and mental health issues within Belvidere and Boone County. For those of you that maybe didn't see the Facebook Live post from the Belvidere Police Department, we had a press conference with the Boone County Health Department last week, I believe Wednesday, where they announced that they had received the grant and that ultimately it was through the Department of Justice. And here in the near future, I anticipate bringing to the city council for your review and hopefully your acceptance, the intergovernmental agreement as well as the acceptance of the grant itself, which would allow us to participate in this. And then the command staff's working with the Fire and Police Commission to try and get language in the rules and regulation to streamline the testing process for lateral candidates. Lateral candidates are police officers who want to test with our department for various reasons. So one last thing, the police department participated just this last weekend on Saturday, Deputy Chief Wallace and Officer Blankenship in med collection. We collected over 500 pounds of over-the-counter and controlled substance medications that were subsequently turned over to the Drug Enforcement Administration for disposal. Any questions on any of that?
Yes, Alderman Porter.
Yeah, you say that you're testing body cams in the field right now. So does that mean you have some that are actually out there with the officers?
Yes, sir. We have, at any given time, two officers on any shift that are testing body cams. We have two different companies, four from Panasonic, one from Montel Technologies. We've worked with the State's Attorney's Office. We've developed a draft policy for officers to abide by. And the State's Attorney's Office understands and knows that we have them and can currently be using that footage for evidence purposes.
Anyone else? Chief, is that your update?
That, that is the end of my update. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, you can stay right where you are.
I was planning on it.
Up, up next, we have a request for, from PD, from Chief Woody, for authorization to purchase two new vehicles. Chief, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the expense is not lost on me and I understand the gravity of the circumstances and situation, situation in which the city faces financially. Back in March and April, the police department presented a budget proposal to the council, which ultimately approved four new squad cars in 2021 fiscal year budget. Then we realized just how uncertain the fiscal future of the city was. In talking with both Becky and the mayor, we decided that it wouldn't be prudent to go ahead and request those expenditures until we had a better idea of what the financial certainty of the city was going to be. Just recently, I talked with Ms. Tobin and because of some factors, she felt more comfortable. She had a better idea of what the financial future of the city was going to be at least up to this point. In addition to getting the, the grant from the federal government, which has then been distributed back to the city of Belvidere for a million 55,000. And she indicated that she would feel comfortable if I proposed to the council for consideration the purchase of two new squad cars. My concern is if we continue to hold off, that, it's the same concern that we have every year when we propose four new squad cars, is that we have cars that are degrading maintenance issues and we try and anticipate which cars are going to be the ones that we need to rotate out based off of mileage, maintenance history, year of vehicle. And this situation is no different. But instead of requesting four new squad cars, the Belvidere Police Department's requesting authorization to proceed with the purchase of two new squad cars is listed below. Two 2021 Dodge Durangos for patrol at 46,250 each totaling 92,500. They're to be purchased from Kunis Dodge of Belvidere, Illinois through the Illinois statewide bid award. The price of these vehicles include extended warranty, upfitting, necessary aftermarket police equipment. And I would request consideration for a motion to authorize capital fund expenditures for the purchase of the two 2021 Dodge Durango police package SUVs at a cost not to exceed 46,250 each for a total expenditure of 92,500.
May I have a motion of that effect, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Alderman Flurry, please proceed.
With these two new vehicles, which ones would they be replacing? Like, what are the years and mileage on the ones they'd be replacing?
Absolutely. Great question. So when I proposed at the beginning of the budget process, we picked out four squad cars. And I would look at those same four squad cars. The issue that we run into is we can order these vehicles now. We may not get them till spring. So, you know, it could realistically be any one of these four squad cars. Or it could be another one that has engine problems, that gets into an accident, something, you know, along those lines that may, may make us revisit which squad car it is. But just to give you an idea, so we have squad 44. It's a 2012 Dodge Durango. I've got literally a page of maintenance issues, probably half of which are from the last two years. I've got a 2012 Dodge Durango, again, three quarters of a page of maintenance issues. But, you know, this one specifically, we had to replace the engine. So we're looking at those types of maintenance items to help guide us in which one to, to pick, to, to change out. As far as mileage, some of these vehicles, we're looking at roughly 70,000 miles, 75,000 miles on some of these squad cars.
Any additional questions or comments? Yes?
Yes, is there any reason that we're going with Durangos versus the Chargers?
Our patrol officers drive the, the Chargers and our supervisors and K9s drive the Durangos.
Anyone else with a question for the chief concerning this purchase? Hearing nothing. All those in favor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Thank you. Motion is approved unanimously, which brings us to item D, again concerning the police department and request to purchase four Starcom portable radios.
In my conversation with Ms. Tobin, I identified the capital expenditures or equipment expenditures that were a true need for the police department that we've just put off only because we didn't know what the financial certainty was going to be. But given the opportunity, obviously, portable radios falls right within that category. Our radios are at least 13, or seven, eight years old. And they are getting to the point where they're breaking down. We can't find replacement parts or they're having to be cannibalized from other radios that, you know, have been inoperable. So we would request Belvidere Police Department's requesting authorization to purchase four new portable radios. They're to replace the radios that are approximately 13, 13 years old, not in good working condition. Four radios budgeted in the equipment line item at a cost of 16,000. As shown on the attached quote from Motorola Solutions, cost of each radio is $3,679.69. I would request a motion to authorize the purchase of four Motorola Starcom 21 APX 4,780 megahertz Model II portable radios at a cost of $3,679.69 each for a total cost of $14,718.76 using funds budgeted in the equipment line item number 01-5-210-8200 for the purchase of the radios.
I have a motion to that.
Snow will make that motion.
I have a motion by Snow, second by Porter. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Alderman Arivolo, please continue.
These are going to be encrypted somehow, right? Or is it going to just be open waved so anybody can listen to?
Sure. We will have encrypted channels, but our main operating channels will be available to the public.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion's approved unanimously. Thank you, Chief. One more. Oh, you were going to cover the homecoming parade application. Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Man, many faces tonight.
Yes, apparently so. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city council previously approved a date, time, and route for the Belvidere High School, Belvidere North High School to conduct a homecoming parade this evening. The school district has provided a new application requesting a change in the date, time, and route for what's now being considered the Community Spirit Pride Parade. So I would request a motion to approve the new application for Belvidere Parade permits submitted by the Belvidere School District. With a side note, that the map that you have attached to the memo has been updated. And for your consideration, the route that it has been updated to would simply take the students from Belvidere High School to East Avenue, to Sixth Street, to State Street, to Business 20, to Beloit, and then to Belvidere North High School. And then those starting at Belvidere North High School would just reverse that, that route.
And it is of note that this is a parade of people inside vehicles, correct?
That is correct. It'll be a vehicular parade. Nobody outside that is participating in the parade itself.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve? Motion by Alderman Porter. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alderman Stevens seconds. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Alderman Burton, please proceed.
Thank you. I'm all about a properly permitted parade. But correct me if I'm wrong, did the Halloween parade get canceled?
It did.
Over the weekend?
Yes.
So that just raises some questions here. I'm all about this parade. While we're on, were we going to let the community know that the... While we're on, were we going to let the community know that the parade's canceled?
The club was going to push that out. It was their decision to cancel the parade.
Okay, I just wondered. So, I don't know. I mean, I'm all about this and we'll prove it, but just that the Halloween Parade got canceled, that's kind of, I don't know, it's just no guarantees, I guess, huh?
Well, the idea was the parade, the O U Parade, was going to be a typical parade with kids in costumes, people on the streets downtown. And they actually had two of their members test positive last week, Thursday or Friday. And so at their Friday meeting, they voted to not have the parade. So I think it's probably a good idea, we could put that on our website, too, and push that out. Okay, it already is, good. We had furnished them, they didn't feel like they could furnish masks, this was earlier on, when discussion of the parade. And how that really transpired is when they approached, I said, "Well, I don't think it's a legislative item for the city government to decide about Halloween." So I said, "If you go and talk to the health department, and you guys can figure out a way that you might be able to do that, then it's possible." One of the things that was the challenge is because the kids aren't in school, there couldn't be any bands, and so it was going to be a little different kind of event than usual, and the gathering afterwards was kind of a challenge. Mr. Carlisle had pushed out that they didn't really feel like they had the funding or the responsibility to furnish masks, so I gave them a box of masks, twenty-five hundred masks, so that they were in position to at least be able to furnish masks for folks that didn't turn out for the parade and the event after. And Friday, I'm going to guess it was late morning, early afternoon, I got a message from them that they had, membership had decided to cancel the parade. That's what I know about it. Anybody else? So we have a motion and a second, correct? All those in favor of granting of the parade permit, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
So the homecoming parade event is approved unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Under other, this evening, Alderman Freeman had requested to put back on the agenda a discussion concerning public comment time limits, and this had kind of come up two or three weeks ago, and the decision was made by the council at that time that the current ordinance that was in place was sufficient, because we have not held anybody to the tenants of that ordinance when they've come to speak or wanted to speak additionally and gone forward. But Alderman Freeman asked it to be put on the agenda again tonight, so it is. Alderman Freeman, you have the floor.
Thank you. I asked for this to be put back on the agenda because I didn't have a chance to weigh in last time as I had to be absent from the meeting. I understand that everything remains status quo, because this administration and this council doesn't hold people's feet to the fire when it comes to time limits on public comments. However, my concern is, future administrations and councils may choose to do so. I don't think that two minutes is an appropriate amount of time for somebody wishing to comment on a hot button topic, to actually be able to get their point across. I would like to do away with this altogether, but I would at least like to see it extended to, you know, maximum, minimum, five minutes to ten minutes, with no limit on how many people can speak. I don't think that any one person's opinions are any more or less important than others. So to have some people be able to speak and then say, "Okay, we're at a time limit, so the rest of you that signed up to speak are not going to be able to get to talk," is unacceptable to me. So like I said, I understand that we presently don't hold that to account, but I worry that future administrations and councils may in fact use that rule, and so that's why I would like to see it renegotiated.
Attorney Drell, would you like to speak to her comment, please?
The, excuse me, the Open Meetings Act, when they amended to require public comment in meetings, specifically allowed for the imposition of reasonable constraints upon those public comments. Most communities have adopted time constraints similar to the ones that appear in our code. There might be two minutes, there might be five minutes. Most have a max number of minutes allowed per meeting, and the reason is pretty obvious. The purpose of public comment is not necessarily for the public to come in and speak about items on the agenda, they certainly could. It is for them to address the concerns and the problems that they have with the corporate authorities of the city. But if you don't have limits upon it, then they can effectively, I don't like to use the word hijack, because it's not really hijacking, they're trying to express their honest concerns, but they can delay the ability of this council to effectively dispense with the business, which is on the agenda following that. Your code has written, first of all, does say two minutes, and twenty minutes is your outside maximum for a total public comment. It specifically allows the mayor and the city council to give additional time to any person that needs it, if they so choose to. I think the last time this came up, I made the comment, if it's two minutes, if it's five minutes, that's certainly up to the comment. I would not recommend doing away with either one of those limits in some form entirely. We have had situations in the council chambers before where we had means going till ten, eleven o'clock at night, because we had people that had hot button issues before the council, and they wanted to address the council, and they all talked, essentially saying the same thing over and over and over again. We've had planning zoning commissions going to one in the morning with people that simply would not stop talking, repeating themselves over and over and over again. That was not a public comment context, that was in a public hearing context, but the same thing goes. So while I would not necessarily say two minutes is enough or not enough time, that's simply up to this body, but I would recommend keeping some limits in place, so that when we do have these kinds of issues, we have a mechanism to be able to get to the other business of the city and dispense with it. Under your current rules, if somebody wants to speak, but we ran out of time, they are allowed to speak at the next meeting. So it's not like they never get to speak to the corporate authorities, they do get to make their point. Another point I want to make is I understand Alderman Freeman's concerned about, okay, we've been good about allowing people to speak if they want, but the next council may not be so nice. The reality is, the next council, the next mayor, they could go backwards and make it one minute and ten minutes. Any council can change these rules by ordinance as it sees fit. So just because you change it now does not bind that future council. They could unwind it at that point if they wanted to. So if you want to make it five minutes and twenty minutes, or five minutes and twenty-five minutes, that's certainly up to this council. I've been talking probably for two, two and a half minutes by now, and people are tired of hearing me talk, so it's up to you.
So if you have a motion you would like to present, Alderman Freeman?
Well, I understand the whole, I guess, essentially filibustering, you know, concept, but I do think that it should be at least five minutes per speaker, and maybe at least, I would, I would think, five minutes per speaker, that would be eight speakers, forty-five minutes, max. And we could announce at the beginning, if we seen there was multiple people wishing to speak, that it would be announced that you are going to be held to a five-minute So I guess my motion would be to amend it, to read five minutes per person, forty-five minute total limit on public comment speakers.
So, okay, I need to ask the city attorney a question, because I'm not sure about procedure at this point in view. So if we're going to propose a motion and a second to change the ordinance as it stands, do we need to repeal the other ordinance or amend the ordinance? What would be the appropriate legal process for what she is putting forward?
The motion as presented is okay, and what we do is we'll come back in ordinance form, amending our code, because this is within the city code. So the motion's appropriate, and I would come back with an ordinance in a week for first reading, which would require a motion and a second, a second reading.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second for the motion now on the floor?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Alderman Stevens. Additional questions or comments concerning the proposed motion on the floor? Alderman Snow, did you wish to make a comment?
No, that wasn't me.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a comment concerning the motion on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the motion, proposed motion on the floor, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion's approved unanimously, and we'll come back in ordinance form for final approval. Okay, under item B, unimproved alleys, the intent this evening, what?
Mr. Mayor, under public comment, I put, we discussed this earlier, I put out an email to all the council regarding whether or not the council wanted to, because it is on the agenda already, go forward and revert back to how we had a public comment during the earlier COVID months, requiring email form, or whether we wish to go as we have, given the governor's new executive orders. Do you want to take that tonight, or do you want to cover it in two weeks?
Well, while we're on it, we might as well talk about it, since public comment, that's a good point. So the governor changed the rules, and we had Attorney Drell research what our parameters and our options were. And so do we want to do as we did tonight? We had some folks that sent a letter in that read into the record, because we're supposed to have ten people in this room, quite honestly. And we, as you can tell by the X's on the carpet on the hallway, and we do have some extra space in here, so we are all publicly distanced appropriately this evening. Do we want to entertain going back to those rules and follow what the second mitigation steps are, that we are now in that phase two mitigation again? Yes, Alderman Porter.
What about the public call-in on the phone number? Is that a possibility, or is it strictly email, you say?
The, we, all right, so a little bit of history. You'll recall back in, when was it, May? After the governor adopted Executive Order Seven, which essentially shut down the state, some communities had issues with how do we handle public comment? The Henry County went ahead and said, "Send in emails, we'll read them into the record." The Attorney General's Office, the Public Access Counselor specifically said, "That is an appropriate way to handle public comment during the shutdown when people aren't supposed to be out." We adopted, when I say we, this corporate authorities adopted a temporary rule at that time that said all public comment would be by email only. That was to prevent having a lot of people coming into the room, especially when, you know, we're supposed to be shut down essentially. And so we did that. That order by its own terms, though, those rules terminated once the governor's stay-at-home orders terminated, which would be when he brought us to phase four. On Friday, the governor adopted new executive orders, saying there's not supposed to be more than ten people in any meeting. So my question to the council and the mayor was, given the fact that we're only supposed to have ten people in the meeting, you add up the number, Alderman, the mayor, the department heads, some of which would sit outside in the hallway by those X's the mayor mentioned, do we want to go back to saying public comment by email only? Earlier, we did not use the telephone to do that, because to have people shouting out, "Hey, I want to talk, I want to talk," very difficult. There's no way for them to really sign in easily. So we set it up where they could email the clerk, we'd read it, read into the record. I suppose if they wanted, they could email the clerk to get on a list of public comment makers, and then they could call in and do it that way. Either way works, and we don't have to do this, obviously. It's just one way of handling to keep the numbers in the room down until we get out of the phase two mitigation standards. But it's completely up to the council.
As long as we can publicly distance and don't run out of spaces in the hallway where people, they can come in and use the microphone and use the podium, we did that also. But, you know, we've tried to be as flexible as possible, and we adapted to a lot of things. We closed City Hall, we kept stuff out of City Hall. I've had to get tested twice in the last five weeks, because we've had city employees or people we were interviewing for jobs test positive, you know, the next day. We're a very small crew here in City Hall, there's thirteen of us that conduct the city's business every day. And if we get to a point where we had to quarantine the majority of our workforce here, it would severely impair our ability to do the business. And so it's not an effort to not have people come, we're happy to have people come, as was evidenced before. We have not had a policy where we don't condone people speaking their mind or taking their time to say things. So we're thinking from, and Mr. Drell did an excellent, Attorney Drell did an excellent job of presenting what our options are. Under the current ruling reverting to phase two, it's a consideration to go back to where we were in phase two, and just as things improve, to relax the issues again. But I'd like to hear from folks on the council about how you feel about that, so open the floor for discussion.
And before the council was the mayor, I'd also like to point out that once those rules we adopted earlier this spring went away with the reopening of the state by the governor, our rules as well, the state statute essentially provide, we could do it different if we want to, but they provide for in-person public comment. Now, we read one into the record earlier today, but theoretically, they should have been here to do that. So if you don't want to require them to do it, you may want to consider during the duration of the emergency order, that we give them a choice of coming in person, talking, or doing it by email. We can post that as well. So there's a few ways to skin this cap, but it's up to the council how they want to proceed.
Snow has a comment?
Yes, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
And I realize I'm not physically there, so the logistics, I'm familiar with the building, and at this point, I agree with Mr. Drell that, you know, we need to give him the option of sending in a written memo to be read into the record, but I sure believe that we should be able to accommodate a handful of people to actually verbally express their views during the public comment. And I realize, you've got the X's on the floor, I don't know if we're making use of the exit hallway back by the clerk's office to the left of Mr. Drell right now, that would facilitate staff, more of the staff sitting there, and allow more public people to be in the hallway, but, and/or make use of that hallway in the back southeast corner for one or two people to use the cordless mic, so that people that do have a passionate issue, that do need to express themselves, can do it, a lot of people aren't going to, it would be a large scramble if they, at the last minute, they find out they've got to send an email by a deadline, and I just don't see that being very conducive to that format. But I do believe, if nothing else, we need to, during this order period of COVID, and even through the whole COVID, I think we ought to allow public comment to be able to be read into the deal. So just tossing that out there, that's where I think.
Well, then we have another thing.
order period of COVID, and even through the whole COVID, I think we ought to allow public comment to be able to be read into the deal. So just tossing that out there, that's where I think.
Well, then we have another thing that we need to consider. It's maximum mean number of people that are meeting at twenty-five. We could get, we're sixteen people right here right now. And so, if the full council was here and everybody else was here, we're at twenty-two, you know. So what happens when we hit twenty-five? We just keep, we just keep, yeah. And so, we're supposed to be ten. So what point, you know, and here's the idea about that. Somebody comes in, and they need to wear a mask, of course, if they're going to come in and speak, if they're not properly distanced. And we would encourage wearing a mask and be properly distanced if they're coming in from outside. But having pervaded, somebody comes in and they test positive the next day, and they think they got it here. And I mean, people have to take responsibility for themselves in this COVID crisis, admittedly. But I think, I just don't think allowing as many people as we can fit in the building, because realistically, we opened up all the offices, we put people ten feet apart, we could fit a whole lot of people in here. I think we need to have something that works, and we know what the orders are. And I think we're already compromising, and I don't mind the compromising. And I think it's fine for people to come in and speak. But if we get, last week, we had eight council members here, okay? And we would be already, you know, double the limit. And I don't know if there were repercussions or not. I mean, everybody seems to be ignoring the governor and the health department anyway. So I think we need to really think this through and decide what we want to do. And as far as, and Alderman Snow, I'm not real sure if we push this out on our YouTube channel and on the city website, and on YouTube with our meetings that you need to call in and you need to send a letter, I think that that will solve the issue, because it didn't present a problem before. When things were, when we had City Hall shut down, people sent letters. People that did show up typically talked for two minutes or less and split, you know, it was like Andy selling his tickets to whatever it is that monthly he sold tickets to. But, you know, I want to consider it carefully, because I don't think it's appropriate that we just totally ignore, because we have a community that now, we're limiting our businesses, even though there's some flexibility in that. So, what's your pleasure, Alderman Porter?
Well, I think during the current situation that we're in now, at the level we're at, probably email would be the most appropriate thing for public speaking, because you have to keep in mind that we did have a public speaker here a few weeks ago, who I won't mention any names, but has since tested positive, and is now in quarantine with his family for COVID, and he was not wearing a mask. So we need to keep that in mind.
Everybody, anybody else want to bite at the apple? Oh, Alderman Freeman, please proceed.
So then are you going to go back to the remote with the aldermen? I mean, as you just said, you have sixteen people in the room right now. So is the alderman going to go all back to remote to be in compliance with, you know, ten people or less in the room?
So those aldermen who have mastered this ability to do remote, I would encourage them to do remote if they can, if they're comfortable with that format. I think the fewer people we have in here, the less the chance of spread is. I mean, it's just, it's a game of numbers. So if aldermen are comfortable with that, I would encourage that.
Okay, so on the city's website for the city council meetings, there is a public comment COVID-19 that says, while the governor's limitations regarding public gatherings are in place, we encourage the constituents who wish to participate to do so remotely. So if you wish to make a public comment but not attend a public meeting, you may do so in writing by clicking here. And it's a submission form. So I think anybody that really wants to make a public comment is either going to go to this page and realize they need to do it remotely, or they're going to be told by one of their aldermen that there's something on the agenda that probably pertains to them that they may want to comment on, and the aldermen could then tell them they should probably do it by email or this submission form.
You know, that's a very good point, and I agree with you. The information is there. This is not an attempt to curtail people making comments. This is trying to look at the situation that we're in, in the city of Belvidere, in our community now with COVID, and we're the highest rate in the state right now. And so, there are a lot of different explanations and thoughts and everything about this. But I think it behooves us to err on the side of caution if we can, and give people the opportunity to still be able to comment, and give aldermen the opportunity. Some of us have not been to meetings, some of the aldermen haven't been to meetings in months until last week or the last couple of weeks. And so, it works, and we seem to be able to do that okay. So what do we want to do? Somebody make a, do we want a motion, Mike?
As Alderman Freeman pointed out, there's still on our website that they have the option of submitting it by email. We've kept that up there, even though it's not formal within the code to do it that way, just because of the pandemic that's going on. As you see, we utilized that earlier tonight. You have one of two options, I said, well, three options, but do nothing, in which case, we'll just keep going like we've been going. Theoretically, at least, I'd like to specifically authorize the option to use email. What I did do is I presented a recommended motion. That recommended motion is to require any public comment to only be by email. And it reads, "A motion to limit public comment to written comment at any public meeting, which will be read into the record by city staff during the public comment portion of the meeting. Any such written public comment must be received by the city clerk no later than 4:30 p.m. the day of the public meeting. The clerk shall provide email address for purposes of receiving the public comment and post that address on the city's website," which, as you know, was already done. We did that back in the spring. "Upon termination of the governor's executive order 2020-58," that's the one that went affect this last Friday, "as well as any other executive order restricting public gatherings during COVID-19, this policy shall immediately terminate, and public comment will revert to its usual requirement of in-person attendance." This is the exact same motion with the change of what causes, in this case, Executive Order 2058, as we did last spring. The old one said Executive Order 07, because that was the other executive order. So it's the same exact policy that the council adopted back in the spring. If you want to go that route limit to only written comment, it'd be appropriate for somebody to make that motion. If you don't want to make that one, I can give you a different motion.
I'll entertain the motion.
Just real quick, real quick, I had a question. Would we maybe want to amend the recommended motion and scratch limit, replace that with provide the option of?
That was going to be the alternative motion I had, but there's two kind of ideas floating around there. So I didn't know if an alderman wanted to make the first motion, because the second motion, if you want to give the option, would it be just like you said, Alderman Burton? You prefer the option, or you prefer the absolute only email? Is that the, is that a motion?
A motion by Stevens to offer the option to come in person or by email. And I have a second by Porter, does that affect any additional questions or comments?
And for purposes of the, because this has to be in the minutes, we did this by simply vote last time, I'll probably do it again that way this time. Perhaps I'll bring back a resolution. There'd be a motion to allow public comment instead of limit. To allow public comment by written comment at any public meeting, which will be read into the record by city staff during the public comment portion of the meeting. Any such written public comment must be received by the city clerk no later than 4:30 p.m. the day of the public meeting. And obviously, that's so that we have time to get it ready. The clerk shall provide an email address for purposes of receiving the public comment and post that address on the city's website. Upon termination of the governor's executive order 2020-58, as well as any other executive order restricting public gatherings in COVID-19, this policy shall immediately terminate, and public comment will revert to its usual requirement of in-person attendance. This gives people the option.
Yeah, the only thing is that we'll have to make sure that we control the situation if we have a whole bunch of people show up, up to including people waiting outside if they have to, to keep the number inside the building here. And maybe just have one person at a time in the actual chambers, you know, speaking, instead of people in the audience.
We can do that case-by-case basis, it does not need to be in the executive order. We just won't, you know, be able to limit them, so long as they comply with the time limits that you'd be voting on next week, or in two weeks, three weeks.
So just so I'm clear. The head count's ten, and we're saying we'll allow people to either do it by email or come in person, and we'll line people up in the hallway, even though we may exceed the number of ten in the building. Is that what you're saying? That we're not going to abide by the executive order? That's pretty much what you're saying? Okay. If you want to vote on that, the amendment as Mike read it. All those in favor of the amended motion as read by the city attorney, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye, those opposed nay.
Porter?
Aye.
Bradcliffe?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is passed unanimously. Okay. Up next, under B is unimproved alleys. And the intent of this was not to rekindle the discussion specifically about the alley that we have been fighting about for twenty years. When the incident happened a month and a half ago or so, I went to our public works director, and I said, let's be extremely thorough and go through this chapter and verse. And by that, I mean, look at how many alleys we have, look at how many are unimproved, look at how many that basically people could drive over the grass if they wanted to drive over the grass, what it costs to improve an alley, what the additional costs ongoing for maintaining the alleys would be. Because this is not a small issue, because if we decide to let people drive over the grass, which according to Attorney Drell's research indicates that may or may not be actually factual, or we decide that we're going to improve one alley, there's nothing to say that somebody else who lives on an alley doesn't bring it to council and wants us to improve that alley also. I will turn the floor over to our public works director, Brent Anderson, to share with us his research on this, on this subject.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packet. Again, the question was posed to the city regarding the use of unimproved alleys, as was discussed during the public comment portion of the meeting tonight. And the city attorney researched that question and presented his opinions on what he found, and those are included, those are included attached to my memo. And basically, he arrived at three recommendations for consideration by the city council. My memo basically takes off on his recommendations and provides some background information for the aldermen as far as what we're looking at, the costs and activities, and what's been done previously. The first recommendation from the city attorney was vacate any alleys which are not improved nor maintained, and which are not necessary to access any existing structure. We currently have thirty alleys that fall into what I will call the unimproved alley, and that's either all of the alleys or a portion thereof. If you go down further, jump ahead a little bit down to item number three A, we actually have fifty-three alleys that are fully improved, nineteen alleys that are partially improved, and eleven alleyways that are totally unimproved, which means they're grass all the way through. Without knowing or looking on paper, you wouldn't have any idea that there was an alleyway there. So as far as the vacation goes, we have thirty alleys that I would say are theoretically eligible. However, probably about twelve years ago, council decided to vacate a fully improved alley that we actually turned back to grass and vacated to the joint property owners based on a request from the property owners that lived adjacent to that alley. So we've gone that route also. In addition to that alley, we've previously vacated a little over two miles of alleys throughout the city over time. Alley vacations, we can complete those in-house. We do those typically on a case-by-case basis. And typically, when we vacate them, they're split in half. And most of our alley widths are averaged probably around twelve feet, some are wider, a little bit wider, it's sixteen. A few of them are a little less than twelve. But most of them, by and large, throughout the city that's left are twelve foot in width. And we split those in half, each the joint property owner, with each owner receiving an average of four hundred square feet of property. And I did some checking with, through the assessor's office, and right now, current land value in Belvidere, property value's right around a dollar fifty a square foot average. Option number two, as presented from the city attorney, would be close the alleys that are not maintained or improved to vehicular traffic. Again, because they're unimproved, unless we have regulation that says otherwise, they are open and accessible to the public. So if those want to be closed, we would need a road closed sign, according to the city attorney. And the thirty-six by twenty-four inch road closed signs are forty-one dollars and seventy cents each. And we need two signs per, or two posts per sign. So the total cost, if we were to do all the unimproved alley portions and have them sign accordingly, you're looking at a little over seven thousand dollars to do that. Number three, recommendation number three from the city attorney, would be improve and maintain any planted alleys under its jurisdiction that it feels should remain as alleys. Again, we talked about how many we have improved, and we got the current cost for the street department to construct an alley is twenty-four dollars per lineal foot. The cost to complete improvements for all the unimproved alleys, if we were just to come in and do that, is about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to do that. And again, that's doing the work in-house, and that figures, we would do them over time. And it'd be a long period of time for us to do those in-house, and that would be part of the activities of the street department. Right now, we do alley maintenance on an as-needed basis, and we try to do at least one section of alley each summer. At least this year, we're doing three sections. We have two of the three sections done, and we're hopefully to start the third section yet this week. If Mother Nature keeps cooperating with us, we'll be able to get that work done. And that work, we fund out of our street department line item. It's our street parking lot maintenance and materials line item. And the total costs are what we budget for every year in that line item is between eighty and ninety thousand dollars typically. So again, we just use a portion thereof to do the alley maintenance. One of the benefits we have is, over time, we have purchased our own asphalt machine so we can lay our own blacktop. So that's basically what we've done with alleys recently, is we've done blacktop surface on those alleys. We have previously seal coated the alleys as far as maintenance goes. We've done them twice in the thirty-six years that I've been here working for the city. And those tend to work as well. But at that time, when we did the seal coats, we did not have the ability to put down pavement ourselves. And now that we have another blacktop plant within the city of Belvidere, it's real conducive for us to be doing our own blacktop work, so it works out good for us. The last item D, under number three, in those past packets for improvements, and this is regarding vacant right-of-way, primarily streets. And we have seven of those currently now that have been planted that are unimproved. And typically, in the past, those have been the responsibility of the owner and/or developer. And most of those unimproved streets are in subdivisions or previous plats of subdivision to serve one or multiple lots. And in those cases, when that happens, then the developer builder is responsible to put the section of roadway to our minimum, a minimum section roadway to our standards in, and then we have a recapture, we establish recapture for them at such time as other lots are developed and connections are made for that section of street that's done. So going forward, my goal is to present to you, the council, put a booklet together of our thirty alleys that are basically put a booklet together of our thirty alleys that are basically, all are portions thereof, unimproved, to give you a snapshot overview of each of those alleys, where they're at, where the location is, how many adjacent property owners there are, how many have garages in the back access. If you look at them now, like I said, you would never even know that an alleyway was there. So I think it's going to be fairly obvious ones that are to be vacated. And then we can, again, we will look at each one of these alleyways on a case-by-case basis. And hopefully, once and for all, either decide as a council to approve an alley, make those improvements, or vacate those portions that we can vacate overall, so we don't have what I'll call remnant pieces out there now that have gone this long without any improvements. And then, cost-wise, as we get into this, information on each of the alleys, we can then look at what those costs are. I haven't had a chance to do. Like for snow removal and things, if we have fifty-three alleys now that we are in and plowing, and that takes probably the longest period of time for us during a typical snow removal operation, is to clear the snow and stuff from the alleyways. And if we go to add, if we've got fifty-three now, and we're going to add another thirty sections of alleyway, you're going to, almost double the time it's going to take us for snow removal and stuff. So you're looking at, long-term wise, you're looking at additional costs to do that as well. And in addition, when I provide you with that information on the case-by-case, we can also solicit the input of the adjoining property owners of those alleyways too, for them to opportunity to weigh in on their thoughts on what they would like to see as far as improvements or vacations. But I think this gives you a pretty good overview snapshot of what we have left in the city as far as for unimproved alleyways and what methods or what things we can do with those sections.
Okay, thank you for the thoroughness of that report. City attorney has also put a memo into your packet concerning the alleys. And Mike, would you like to run through this for us quickly, please?
You're asking me to do something quickly? Okay. The memo is fairly self-explanatory. The one thing I've heard a couple of people mention was that I have rendered the opinion that it is legal to drive on the grass, and I'm not rendering that opinion. What I am saying is that, and it's really the meat and potatoes in the second paragraph of the discussion of the memo that was in your packets, a highway and a roadway and a street in the state are really all the same thing. They're roads. The highway is a public way that's been laid out in pursuance of law or established by dedication. All of our alleys were established by dedication to plats. I should say virtually all. So that they were created. What becomes the issue is that a road is defined as a highway that's improved or designed. Well, these aren't improved or really designed. The kicker is ordinarily used for vehicular travel. So the extent that we have alleys that are grass that people are actually using, though, those probably would be legal to drive on because they're routinely used for vehicular travel. It's, I don't know, without going out there and watching people drive, which those alleys are being used that way. Which is why I render the opinion that later on in the memo, it'd be awful hard to enforce a ticket against somebody for driving in an unimproved alley. Because they just say, "I've been doing that for years," and then how do I win that case? So, from enforcement purposes and also for clarity, I mean, why have this mess laying out there? Do one of the three options. And you don't have to do it for all the roads. You can pick and choose your alleys too. You can close some, you can abandon some, or vacate them, and you can improve some. It's up to you to work through which ones you want to do. You could take a wholesale, blanket approach and vacate all the unimproved alleys. Or you can say, "I want to vacate these ten and improve these five and close these thirty." It's up to you how you want to do that. What I would not recommend doing is status quo. Because obviously, it's led to nothing but problems.
Okay, I have a question for both of you now. So, part of the argument for the last many years about the alley has been some of the folks whose property borders the alley didn't want the alley paved, didn't want people driving through it, didn't want... And so, there was never, in my mind, a clear statement from a majority of people, property owners along an alley, that they wanted the alley improved, or they wanted the alley paved, or they wanted us to maintain the alley. And in that being the case, I have a hard time when one property owner wants something, and the rest of the property owners in the testimony that gets presented don't support that by majority, and yet the council voted to approve it. To me, that's a conflict of interest in serving the public. Coupled with, that's item one, coupled with the cost, and I had no real idea of what the cost would be for us to look at all of the alleys that we have and to improve those alleys. And, you know, when you look at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then you look at the cost of plowing and then those kinds of things, and you look about doing it in-house, the costs don't seem overwhelming to do this, but start adding them up. And the time that we would spend doing these alleys, and it's going to take a long time over a period of time, and how do we approach each alley? Do we solicit comments from the unimproved alleys of what the property owners that abut the alleys or border the alleys want to do? Do we consider them, or do we just decide because it's our right-of-way, we're going to do the alley? What I would like to do is have a clear and concise policy going forward of what we're going to do. Because then that eliminates any confusion or argumentation about, okay, does this alley fit this? Does this alley fit that? Are we going to maintain this alley? And I know that may be an almost impossible question to ask. But I think it's time that we do this, because having neighbors, argue with neighbors, and it gets really ugly, as we've all experienced in this chamber, most of us have experienced in this chamber when we've had these discussions. This is city of Belvedere. We're all citizens. We all have rights in the city of Belvedere, and we should learn to get along. This has become something that took on a life of its own, and I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong. I've made my decisions based on the facts I just shared with you at the beginning of this little spiel. So I would like you, as the council, to decide a very firm direction on what we want to do, and I don't expect you to jump up and state it tonight. As Brent said, he's got some more work to do, to come back to us with some additional information. We're really done with improving alleys. We've got one more to do this year that will get done, and it's an already improved alley that we're, you know, bringing back up to standard. And so, let's let him finish that. Would be my thought, to have Director Anderson finish his study on this. Bring these booklets back to us, have us look at those very carefully, and put this back on the agenda when we're ready to move forward and make a real decision on what we're going to do as a policy for the city, so everybody gets treated fairly. And there are, and nobody's ever going to agree a hundred percent, but I think we could do a better job of presenting a programming to the city about our alleys as they exist now. Does that make sense to everybody? Is that...
Alderman Snow would like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Sure, Alderman Snow, please proceed.
Okay, so I get the idea that having a consistent policy is a great idea. I don't have any issue with that. Having been the recipient, and my ward literally blocks away from me having two alleys that are either completely done now or were in the process as of the weekend. And I can tell you, when you have a nice clean-cut alley, it adds to the aesthetics of the neighborhood, as opposed to having, lack of another word, a crappy alley or an alley that's just, you know, hodgepodge or whatever. So I'm kind of in favor of the long-term, improve the alleys that are needed and used on a regular basis and try to vacate as many of the alleys that we can that, A, nobody has to have or are never used. And on those occasions, and I'm just throwing this out there as a topic, for those occasions where you have an alley that is used by one household that maybe has room to actually access it if given the proper materials or whatever, to bring it out to the regular street, to their garage, that maybe the city could vacate that alley and provide the improvements needed to access the other end of their garage or whatever, so that we can get rid of the long-term effect of the alley as an ongoing issue. Just tossing that out there, I realize if you've got an alley with ten people, and, you know, we're not going to do ten of them, but if we've got an alley with ten people and only one person really needs the alley, and we can facilitate another process by which we get them out to the street in an amenable way, that maybe that works out for everybody, so. But I think having a decent-looking alley can go a long way in this stuff. It does make it look fresh, and I think it helps keep people in line and keep it where you're going to maintain it and make it not a broken window effect. If you've got crap, it just keeps perpetuating, so. And I think we can leave it up to the Public Works Director to go through and find those entities that do get improved. And in some cases, it might be starting off with a base of gravel before the next cycle of items get resurfaced with asphalt, so. Just tossing that out there, that I'm in favor of in the long-term improving the alleys. And in some cases, I know there's alleys that don't go through, which may or may not be good for the public works because it gives them a place to park snow down the alley as opposed to pushing it to and through and going to the other side of the street. I'm not really sure. I remember years ago, there was the aspect of if emergency vehicles were to come down the alley because that was the best accessibility for somebody in need, that having a decent alley to drive on was the way to go. Just tossing that out there for comment. And that's my part so far.
Attorney Drell, I had some comments addressing the first thirty of your comments.
Just very briefly. Alderman Snow hit on the issue about prohibiting access to an existing structure. That comes out of a theory, and I hate to use the word vacation law because it sounds like we're going to Cancun, but vacation law. You cannot prohibit access to a structure, I mean, you can't land-lock it. That doesn't mean, it's actually to a land. I use the word "structure," but to the land. I use the word "structure" because, you know, we're dealing with garages in a lot of cases. If they have access to that structure off of another road, whether the driveway is there or not yet, if they can get to that structure another way, that does not stop the city from vacating the alley if it chooses to. It's the only way there's absolutely no other way to reach that spot that we'd have difficulty vacating that land. So prohibiting access is a very strict requirement. It means no access.
Anybody else? Alderman Porter.
Well, I just wanted to comment that I'm not really in favor of option two at all, putting up signs and completely not allowing access, because some people might want to have occasional access to landscaping, if they need to haul something to the back of their yard or something like that. So I wouldn't be in favor of putting signs up to completely close the road.
Okay, Alderman McGee.
Yeah, I just got a comment. I think I agree with the mayor with, some of the homeowners may not want the alley improved. I think a good first step may be doing a petition for all the homeowners to see whether or not they want an unimproved or partially unimproved alley actually improved.
If I can recommend, let Brent come back with his recommendations, then those that we might want to vacate, contact the property owners and see which way they might want to go on it, but...
Yeah, that would be my recommended process. Once I go through and provide them all, and then we'll go through and at least initially have a consensus. We are talking about thirty alleys, so that's not a huge number. So certainly, I could craft a letter up and send it out to all the adjoining property owners for each one of those. And I guess if you want to provide that much time for me, and it's winter season, so we're not going to be acting on this same time soon, be the best time to do that. I can go ahead and send out those letters to those adjoining property owners and request feedback from them on what they would like to see done, either improved or vacated for those portions that are unimproved. And certainly, for those alleys that we have that portions are improved and portions are unimproved. What's already improved, more than likely, we will go ahead and keep on maintaining those. But we could have the occasion like we had, like I said previously, where we had a fully improved alley that the people said we don't need anymore. All of our garages, all of our access are off-street now. We'd rather not have that there. And we did. We went in and removed all the blacktop. We put black dirt down. We seeded it, graded it, and vacated it.
So I think that this is something that we will let the Public Works, if it's okay with you, work on this winter. I would also add this. The very first alley that we make a decision on, I would like to be the alley that Alderman Freeman lives on and the new folks live on. And I would like them to figure out a way that's going to serve both of them fairly. I had read a comment that perhaps it was okay with you guys if it were improved. You would rather have it approved than have somebody driving across the grass. Is that, did I read that correctly? Okay. So, you know, I just want this, I don't want to have this war between neighbors kind of thing about this particular issue any longer. I love those trees too. I thought it was very nice, but realistically, I don't want somebody driving across your wet grass and putting ruts in your grass either. So if we can figure out a way to do this and have a discussion and come back, we'll make that one of our priorities, is to resolve the thoughts about that alley first. But if it's okay with everybody, we'll have Brent prepare his booklet and get the rest of his facts in line that he wants to present to the council, and when he presents those, we'll take up this discussion again. Is that amenable to everybody in the room? Okay, can I have an aye? Well, for a vote, let's do a roll call vote. Okay. Well, I'd just like to have it on the record. So I would like to have it on the record that everybody's agreed, so Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
I agree, aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Nine in favor.
Okay, thank you. For the record, we are moving ahead with a plan. Appreciate it greatly. All right, so next up, under C, we have vehicle repair, Street Department Truck number two zero seven nine.
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in your packet. Vehicle, our Street Department Truck 2079 is a 2008 Ford F-550 diesel truck that needs a new diesel injection system. Unfortunately, in order to make these repairs, basically, the whole truck needs to come apart. When I say the whole truck, I mean the whole truck needs to come apart. In order to get to all the components of the injection system, we do not have the time nor the space available currently to complete this work ourselves. We're in the middle of trying to get everything transferred over for the winter season and getting that stuff ready, and we just basically don't have the time to put towards this particular vehicle. This truck, we use it, it's got the hook lift system. It's a white cab, and we use it for branch collection. We have the chipper box that we put on it. And we also have the flatbed and another tailgate, but primarily, we use it for the chipper box, so we should be out there using it now during branch pickup, but unfortunately, we can't. So the quicker we can get this work done, the better. We've got two proposals to do the work. One from Side Action Diesel Performance, and the other from Anderson Rock River Ford. Seven thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars and six cents from Side Action and eight thousand sixty dollars twenty-seven cents from Anderson Rock River. I would recommend that Side Action Diesel Performance complete the repairs to Truck 2079 at the estimated cost of seven thousand five ninety-five six cents. This work will be paid for from Street Department line item zero one five three ten sixty twenty, equipment repair.
I'll entertain a motion of that effect, please.
Snow will make that motion.
Okay. Alderman Snow makes the motion. Alderman Stevens, seconds. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
I have a question.
Alderman Stevens was first, and then you, Alderman Freeman.
One of the biggest problems with this year of Ford and the motor in it, the whole front end has to come off, the hood, the fenders, and then they have to lift the cab off of it to get to everything. So it's a real pain in the butt to do, and our guys do not have the time probably to do it.
No.
Okay. Alderman Freeman.
So Brent, this truck is a 2008, and it currently needs a new diesel injection system. Obviously, more things going to go wrong with this truck, being how it's already twelve years old. Is it foreseeable that this is going to solve your problem for a few years, or are we going to be, end up looking a couple of years from now at purchasing a whole new truck anyway?
Well, I wish, I would like to be able to say that we would be looking to purchase this truck in a few short years, but unfortunately, when it comes to public works, twenty to thirty years is our standard. So spending seventy-six hundred dollars on this vehicle now to take care of this issue hopefully will give us that extra ten to fifteen years that we normally anticipate out of our public works vehicles.
Additional questions?
Snow has a question.
Okay. Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So, assumably, if they're taking apart this truck, if something else reasonably needs to be replaced, you know, other mechanical issues that are weathered, worn, and/or need to, would more easily be replaced now as opposed to six months to a year from now, having the truck taken apart, I assume they or you guys will assess that?
That is correct. That'll be one of the opportunities, as Alderman Stevens pointed out, when, yeah, I mean, this truck will be completely taken apart. So if they find anything else through that process, they will let us know, and we'll make those decisions accordingly. But again, I think the investment in this vehicle will be a good investment, that I think we will get our return for our money. And frankly, we just don't have the funds available at this point in time for a replacement vehicle. This wasn't high, wasn't even on our five-year list for replacement yet.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, a motion now on the floor. Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Up next, we have under D, Resolution 2022-2020, resolution authorizing the purchase of certain real property adjacent to Logan Avenue to facilitate ADA compliance.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is something that's actually come before the council before, and I frankly just can't remember if we just did it by motion, but we've all asked of purchasing these small slivers of property as part of the Logan Avenue expansion so we can comply with the ADA. The ordinance that you adopted with respect to possible eminent domain previously is part of this, but not included within these properties. Each of these property owners identified has now agreed to purchase the properties at the amount set forth in the resolution. The only reason I'm bringing this resolution to you is so that there's a firm record of the council authorizing the purchase to make it easier to obtain title insurance to ensure our purchase of the property, so that the insurance company then has a very firm record that the purchases were actually authorized. So it's simply re-authorizing that which the council's moved forward to do in the past to create the clear record for future title.
Okay, we have a motion of that effect, approve this resolution.
Snow will make that motion.
Snow has the motion. Porter has the second. Additional questions or comments concerning the resolution now on the floor? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Stevens.
Aye.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Resolution is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have an executive session. I need a motion. All those folks that are...
I can read that next question.
A motion to go into executive session to discuss pending probable or imminent litigation pursuant to Section 2C-11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act regarding Apollo Trenchless Incorporated. May I have that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Arivolo, second by Porter. Questions or comments? Hearing not all those in favor of approval, Will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye; those opposed, nay.
Arivolo.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Radcliffe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay. Approved unanimously. We are now in executive session.
No, we're not yet. Mr. Mayor, as you know, I passed out or sent out an email to the Alderman with a new call-in number. That call-in number ends in six, three, five, eight. For those Aldermen at home, what I'd like to do is, I need to turn off the TV cameras and get us off the air so that people at home don't watch our executive session, and then we can restart a new phone call using the new call-in number and have the executive session. So what I recommend is a three or four-minute recess while I do that and activate the new phone call. Is there anybody at home that does not have that number?
I have the number, Snow does, but question for you. When we come out of executive session, are we going to call back the original number we've been using?
No, we'll probably just, well, nobody else is on the call anyways, so probably just use that number, because the only thing we have at that point is adjournments. There's no action being taken by the corporate authorities at that point.
Oh, that makes common sense. Let's do that.
Okay. So, the vote's been taken. If you all hang up, I'll start the new call in just a few moments, and then we'll be in executive session.